Okay, folks, we are on the air this evening and welcome everyone. Would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, roll call.
Colson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Yeah.
Callen.
Here.
Kupinski.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Okay, first this evening on the agenda is a special presentation, and this is for the GFOA Awards of Excellence. And with us this evening, we have Chief Financial Officer for Marion County in Oregon Municipal Finance Officers Association liaison with the National Government Finance Officers Association. So I'd like to introduce Jeff White, and welcome this evening.
You're mayor canopa, members of the city council. It's a pleasure for me to be here with you. As you mentioned, my name is Jeff White. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Marion County. I'm here tonight, though, as a member of the board of the Directors of the Oregon Municipal Finance Officers Association, which I'm going to refer to as OMFOA going forward, which is a chapter of the National Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA. OMFOA maintains a membership of approximately 500 members from counties, cities, school districts, special districts, and other government entities, along with partners from associated businesses such as banks, software companies, attorneys, and bond underwriters. The organization was instituted to promote professionalism and excellence in public financial management. OMFOA provides training opportunities for our membership, both at semi-annual conferences and via webinars, providing a committee structure for our members to participate in and address particular topics of interest, and through an individual professional certification program. Your senior accountant, Ms. Ann Baker, is currently the, serves as the president of OMFOA. My specific role on the OMFOA board this year is to fill the position of the National Government Finance Officers Association representative. GFOA was founded in 1906 and represents public finance officials throughout the United States and Canada. The association has nearly 18,000 members from federal, state, and local governments. To meet the many needs of its members, the organization provides best practice guidance, consulting, networking opportunities, publications, recognition programs, this is what we'll talk about tonight, research and training opportunities for those in the profession. Tonight, I'm here to present three awards achieved by the City of Albany through the recognition program sponsored by GFOA. First, I'd like to discuss the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. GFOA established the Distinguished Budget Presentation Awards Program in 1984 to encourage and assist state and local governments to prepare budget documents of the very highest quality that reflect both the guidelines established by the National Advisory Council on state and local budgeting, and the GFOA's best practices on budgeting. Your budget document was reviewed by selected reviewers, who are either members of the GFOA professional staff or outside reviewers with experience in public sector budgeting. Receiving this award is not an easy task. Three separate reviewers must agree that your budget document met the specific criteria to demonstrate that the City of Albany's budget is transparent, effective, useful, organized, and informative. There are 90 different criteria that are evaluated, of which 51 are mandatory. Of those that are not mandatory, reviewers would expect that many would still be included in order to pass. Several criteria require more than just numbers. There are requirements for explanations of policy applications, assumptions, descriptions, and forecasts. Clearly, to achieve this recognition from GFOA, your budget document cannot just be a spreadsheet of numbers. In Oregon, only 43 government entities achieved this recognition for their budget document last year. I also understand this is the 23rd consecutive year that the City of Albany has received this award. That is the eighth longest streak in Oregon, and demonstrates that the City of Albany was one of the leaders in the state in taking on the challenge of creating a budget document that meets the highest standards of GFOA. It takes the combined support and efforts of the mayor, city councilors, the budget committee, the city manager, the finance staff, and other city department staff to win this award. And I believe you and the citizens of the City of Albany should be proud of this great accomplishment. In a minute, we'll recognize Ms. Ann Baker for that, but there's another one we're going to do both at the same time. In addition to the budget award recognition, the City of Albany, for the second year in a row, has also received the GFOA Outstanding Achievement and Popular Annual Financial Reporting Award. GFOA established the Popular Annual Financial Reporting Awards Program, or PAFR, in 1991 to encourage and assist state and local governments to extract information from their comprehensive annual financial report to produce high-quality, popular annual financial reports. Primarily, these reports are specifically designed to be readily accessible and easily understandable to the general public and other interested parties who do not have a background in public finance. Achieving this award is not an easy task either. Eligible reports are reviewed by four judges, who complete an evaluation form specifically designed for this purpose. The judge's evaluation form comprises five categories, which are given varying weights of importance toward the overall final grade. Half the score is based on reader appeal, understandability, distribution methods, and notable and creative achievements. The remaining half the score is based upon overall quality and usefulness of the report, taking into consideration four previous categories. In Oregon, there are actually only four jurisdictions that have achieved this GFOA recognition in the last year. The City of Albany continues to lead the way in Oregon in demonstrating its commitment to quality and transparency to its citizens. So with that, I'd like to ask Ms. Ann Baker up here, so I can present these to her, on behalf of your city.
Congratulations, Ann. Congratulations to the City of Albany.
Thank you.
Finally, the City of Albany cleaned up with the third GFOA award for your audited financial statements. The Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program, or the CAFR Program, was established in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare a comprehensive annual financial report that evidences the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. I save this one for last for a couple of reasons. First, in my opinion, this is the most difficult award to achieve of the three. The checklist that is used to ensure that you meet the GFOA requirements is 79 pages long, and has over 500 items that must be addressed. Of those 500 items, there are 124 specific items, and if any one of them is not appropriately presented in the financial statements, that one failure could disqualify the entire report from the award process. It's a very tough standard to live up to. In Oregon, there are only 112 total recipients of this award, of which only 39 are cities. That puts the City of Albany in a group of only 16 percent of all cities in Oregon that receive this award. I understand this is the 30th consecutive year that the City of Albany has received this recognition. I'd like to say it one more time, the City of Albany seems to be a leader in financial excellence. The second reason I save this one for last, it's my understanding that Mr. Mike Merzynski, your senior accountant, will be receiving this award on behalf of the City of Albany for the last time. I thought it might be appropriate to also recognize him for his years of dedicated service to the City of Albany and its citizens in helping lead the preparation of your financial statements in a manner that is of the highest quality. So with that, I'll ask Mr. Mike Merzynski to come up here. Finally, I would just like to reiterate one last time that the recognition for the receipt of all these awards should include all the finance department staff, Stuart Taylor, who directs their efforts, other city staff involved in the preparation of documents, Mr. Harry, your city manager, mayor canopa, members of the city council, your budget committees, all who work together to provide an environment of excellence here at the City of Albany. I believe the citizens of Albany should be proud, and congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Our very proud boy. That's quite a recognition, and I really thank you for that, so. Questions or comments?
I'd just like to say thank you for taking the time. I mean, I'm sure if things are similar in Marion County to what they're like here, you have plenty on your plate as a finance officer for the county, and it's very nice of you to take your extra time to come here and do this, so.
You're welcome. I appreciate it. I'm a member of OMFOA, and I think it's a great organization, and the opportunity that us kind of accounting geeks can get some recognition for the work we do is worth my time.
Thank you. Thank you so much, so. And thank you for also mentioning about Mike, and his, this is his last council meeting with us, and we will greatly miss Mike, and it's wonderful to be able to hear the accomplishments that he's been able to lead on and, and for the City of Albany. But there's another side piece to Mike. He spends so much volunteering in our community. He's there for a lot of our events, our River Rhythms, our Art and Air Festival. He volunteers the whole weekend. He's like our number-one volunteer. So we are going to really miss him, too.
I'll still be there.
You will? Okay. Oh, good, good. We'll hold you to that. So I know, I was just really sad when I heard that he was going to be leaving Albany, but it's good to know.
He didn't die.
Yeah.
He's just taking it easier.
That shows how devoted he is to our community, so. But no, we are going to really miss Mike, so, and I'm really, really glad that he was recognized, too. So he's been wonderful to work with, so we're very fortunate to have him and all of our finance staff with Albany, so we're very, very proud of that, but thank you so much for this recognition.
Thank you.
Do you want to, were you going to say anything else?
I, too, would just like to add my thanks to Mike for his service to the city, and it has truly been a pleasure and an honor to work with someone of Mike's confidence and integrity over the last nine years, and I know he's going to do a great job for the City of Newport as their finance director. I've already had a conversation with the city manager there, and let him know how I feel about him poaching our best employees, but Mike really will be missed, but it's a great opportunity for him, and we know we all wish him well.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mike. So, yeah, yeah. And thank you, Jim. Also, thank you. Okay, any comments? All right. Next on the agenda is Business from the Public. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? Okay, not seeing anyone.
Is this, what is this?
This would be as if you needed to comment on any item that we have on the agenda, or for any other item. This would be the time.
So this is for the second-hand ordinance?
If you wanted to comment now on the second-hand ordinance, this would be the time to do it. Okay?
I have a couple of things.
Oh, you do? Okay, go ahead and come to the podium, and you'll need to state your name and furnish your address, and then if you could spell your last name, too, for the recorder. Okay? Thank you.
My name's David Koopman. Address 501 Pacific Boulevard. Best Buyers is the business. I want to apologize in advance, because I'm not a public speaker. So there's only a couple of issues that I had on the ordinance, the proposed ordinance. And if you can bear with me for just one second. The main thing that I had a problem with, or a question, is the consignment.
Do you have a page for that?
Rules, it's on page eight.
Page eight? Okay.
I guess there's probably a couple different places for the consignment. But what I have, again, I, sorry, I'm not, this is hard for me to public speak. On a consignment, on a true consignment basis, there's like next-to-no risk on stolen property or for being a gateway for sale of stolen property, especially if the consignment is not going to get paid within 30 days. They're going to get paid with a check. They're going to get mailed a check to their home residence, so there will be a tracking, you know, of where that check is actually going to. There's going to be bank account information on that check. So my thoughts on the consignment is that if it is a true consignment, meaning if somebody brings in a canoe, and they'd rather bring a canoe in to you instead of try to sell it at an auction, they say, "Well, I don't want any money for it now," so they're not getting paid for the item until it sells, and they're getting a percentage. It's almost as if, and a consignment is a agent for that particular person, no different than an auction or an estate sale representative. So my thoughts are, if the consignments are going to be part of the second-hand dealer, which the second-hand dealer's not putting any money out purchasing the items, then auctions and estate sales, they also should have to follow the second-hand ordinance, because ultimately, it's just an agent, and hopefully, there's other people that, in the audience and on the board, that can understand where I'm coming from on this.
So David, you're talking about that, so the consignment would be just, somebody can, just, they can't purchase it for 14 days?
Right. And this is the other thing, is that, you know, they say that, you know, "I don't have a problem reporting the item as an item," but they say, "Well, you can go ahead and put it on the shelf for sale, but you still have to hold it for 14 days." Well, for an example, if I took on a consignment of a, of a skill saw from somebody that's lost their job, or whatever, and a guy comes into the store, says, "Oh, man, my skill saw broke down. I really would like to buy this one, and I need it for the job right now. I don't have time." Well, then you have to say, "Well, I'm sorry, sir, but this one's not available for another 10 days." Well, in the same respect, the person that's consigning it to me is coming to me wanting me to sell the item, you know, and then I have to tell the customer that's bringing it to me, "Oh, I'm sorry, but I'll put it on consignment, but I can't sell it for 14 days."
I understand.
You know, there's, there's, there's no risk, you know, thieves, criminals, drug users, they want their money now. They aren't going to wait 30 days. They want cash. They're, they're not going to take a check. And so the whole purpose of the ordinance is for high, for a high-risk.
Items.
Items, you know, and consignment is absolutely like zero-risk item. So I would like everybody to please consider that.
Okay.
And on page eight, on section C, where it says $20 or more, I just think it should say $20 and one cent on that portion. It just makes sense to anything over $20.
Oh, up on the, item C up on top? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the one thing that we had talked about with the law enforcement here in Albany is that they would assist the second-hand dealers in not becoming a victim themselves by providing them a list of stolen property that's been reported, so that we don't potentially, you know, get in a spot where we're putting out money and becoming a victim. It would be nice to have something in the ordinance stating that the law enforcement is going to help the second-hand dealers by providing a list of those regulated items. Okay, on page four, up at the very top, that says number 16. I just think that if there's going to be changes made on the ordinance, it says on the regulated property, that the police chief can make those changes at his will. I just think it should come in front of a council before anything can be changed on the ordinance.
I'm not quite clear on what your suggestion is on that, so if we do any changes to the ordinance, you're saying?
Right. So it says that the police chief can, can, you know, change the regulated property, you know, the items, and I think that if there's any changes that are going to be made, I think it should be brought up to the board's attention and voted on.
Any, any language to be changed in this ordinance will have to come to the council, if there's any particular language changed, so, yeah.
Okay. And I think, I really didn't have a whole lot, other than I, I hope that the council and the mayor will consider the consignment that ultimately, we're acting as agents, and that's no different than an auction. And, thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you, David. Okay, anyone else that would like to talk on this item? Yes.
My name's Nick Russell, R-U-S-S-E-L-L, at 1225 Pacific Boulevard, Southeast. The part he was talking about with the consignments is, I think what he was trying to get across was, consignments are almost never an issue in theft. You know, when somebody brings something in, and they're willing to wait for their money, they didn't steal it. And I think what he's saying is, is if you could exempt consignments, because there's no money changing hands at the time, that it would make everything a lot simpler, both ways, for us and the police. And still, we still would report the item that we took in, so they'd have a copy for the report, but since there's no money changing hands until the item sells, which would be at a later date, that it would be, consigned items with no money advanced upfront would be exempt from the 14-day hold. I think that's what David was trying to say. I had an issue with the gift cards on page 11, and I talked to Steve about it, and we batted it back and forth, and I don't know, it's probably not a big deal, but people that get gift cards are going to sell them somewhere, if they want to sell them. And my issue was, why not, if you're going to buy a gift card, why not buy it, turn in the information to the police, so that they know if there's a, you know, if a guy's going around all over town selling gift cards, there's something wrong. But if that same person then is selling those gift cards online, or Craigslist, or someplace else, you're not going to have any record, you're not going to even know about it. And I think it's, I don't know, it's not a big issue one way or the other. I do buy one once in a while. I've even bought some from my employees that got them for Christmas presents, that didn't want to go cash them in. So rather than make me a criminal for doing that, or saying, "Hey, I can't do this, you got to go sell it on Craigslist," or something, I, and I talked to Steve about it before, and I said, "You know, I think the best thing to do is, if you're going to buy one, let's know about it. Let's keep it out in the open," rather than create a, and you'll create an industry, because somebody's going to buy them somewhere, if the person wants to sell them. And, you know, this has happened up in Salem, where they've gotten real strict with jewelry. There's people up there that work out of their garages that buy jewelry, and they pay very little for it, and there's no records or anything else. It's in violation of the city ordinance, but they do it. Whereas, I think we're getting a jumpstart on that whole thing by coming out with something like this before we really have a problem in this town, you know, and I think most of the issues in this ordinance are probably pretty good, especially since we've made some corrections. One thing I'd probably add to the list that's not on there is tires and rims. There's a huge industry in tires and rims, and they're not, they're not included anywhere. So that's about all I had.
Question?
Okay, yeah. We have a question for you.
Sure. Go ahead. On the consignment, and I guess I would ask both of you, would there be a problem if someone wants to come and consign something, that even if it, even if you have it sitting there, and it sells that day?
Right.
That there be no exchange of money for a minimum amount of time? So the person walks in, "Okay, you can't, you're not going to get your money for, at minimum, 30 days of it sells today," or, you know, pick a number.
Well, I'd say that you could use the ordinance right there, so you had the 14 days before the person could get paid.
Right. Would that be an imposition on you folks?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Yeah. Thank you, Nick.
Yeah.
Anyone else on this item?
I've got a couple of things.
Okay, all right, David.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that.
Problem.
The only thing that I noticed, there's two items here. On page nine, on the very bottom, a property that has been illegible due to obvious normal use. I'm not sure that the 90 days, the 90 days seems to be a little bit extreme.
What number are you on?
On page nine, on number five.
Five, okay.
It just seems like 90 days is a little extreme for an item that's been obvious, that it's not been tampered with, but it's just worn from use, to put a 90-day hold on it.
Okay.
And the only other item I had was that, that I would hope that this ordinance would be for all second-hand dealers, even second, scrap dealers that sell regulated property. Thank you, and I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else on this item? Okay, yeah, Kevin?
Kevin Manske, M-A-N-S-K-E, 1100 Pacific Boulevard, Southeast. I deserve this body to pass this ordinance as it is. I think it's a good start. If we have to tweak it later on, we can, but this brings us up into the, kind of, modern-day ordinances, where we're talking about this type of thing, and I think the city needs it. That's it. And then we can talk about something else.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, all right. And is that it, from Business from the Public? Okay, all right. Thank you, folks. You counsel, this is the first ordinance you have. Does, would staff need to clarify on anything, chief? Yep, okay. Detective Dorn.
And so, my name is Sergeant Steve Dorn, Albany Police Department, address 1117 Jackson. One of the concerns about changes to the ordinance was previously addressed by the council, and we added that on the last page under the administrative rules, that there could be no changes to the ordinance without approval of the city council. We did meet with the businesses. Three businesses showed up at our last meeting, and one business was not able to make it due to family matters, and so I met with him at a separate time, and he suggested quite a few changes. The one change that I did not agree with is gift cards. I think the value of gift cards, it can perpetuate crime, and I just, it's something that principally I'm against. Really, that's all what I have. Is there any questions for me?
What about the tire and rims that was questioned? Is that something to add, and are, under the regulated property, or have you seen an issue on that?
Not recently, not as a recent crime trend.
Okay.
It could be. It would, it would deserve something, they would, maybe a second look at a later time.
Would that fall under automotive? Ben?
I, I think that mainly, on that list of regulated property, would mainly deal with tools, and I don't, I think, there's a lot of automotive tools that are very expensive, readers and wrench, or specific wrenches. It could be at a later time. There's no reason we can't add or remove things at a later time, if we find that we don't have a need for it, or we do have a need for it, just to come for the body and explain why we have a need for it.
Okay. And, was that, Wes?
Yeah, Steve, could you explain, I mean, we've heard concerns about the consignment issue. What's the police department's perspective on that, and the potential of using the, you know, like delaying payment for 14 days, as opposed to the way we've structured the ordinance? Is that a problem, or?
I don't believe that we have a problem. The, the main purpose, I think, of The main purpose, I think, of the ordinance is going to be reporting, is the information. And that's the main goal of the ordinance, is information, to know where property's coming from and where property's going.
So, if you were to make the change to exempt, or to change, to tweak the regulation on consignments, that wouldn't be a...
Oh, more than acceptable of that.
Okay, so, would we need to re-advertise if we were to make that?
No, and could I perhaps go one step further and suggest where you might change it and how, and see if Detective Dorn would agree? If we went to the definition section, which is on page two, agenda packet, page four. Steve, I'm thinking of the definition of acquire. That we take consignment out of the definition that is in the second line, and that we instead say, in item C, among the ones that, where it's not specifically called out, then, you know, on C, you've got, does not include, how about acquisition of property for consignment sale, wherein payment is not made to the owner within 14 days?
Whatever, whatever the timeframe that you have to...
14 days, or 30 days, or whatever.
Yeah.
Would that be, would that fit then with your other regulatory scheme? So, it's, we would take acquire, we would take consignment out of the specific definition of acquire, and we would put it down to sub-C as what is not included, as long as, or actually, I'm sorry, let me change that. Leave consignment in the definition, so that it is, in fact, regulated property that has been acquired, but then included a separate exemption as a sub-C, that would say, acquisition of property for consignment sale, wherein payment is not made to the owner within 14 days of consignment. So that way, it's still a regulated property, but there's a specific exemption, as long as payment is not made within 14 days. Would that, I, on the fly here, I'm just trying to see if that would address the concern to your mind and to the mind of the citizens who've spoken.
Yeah, we're fine with that, that's...
Well, then, that's just a suggestion, if that's the council's wish. I also would like to echo Sergeant Dorn's suggestion that you adopt, if you think it's 99% of the way there, my recommendation would be adopt it. Look at it again in 60 or 90 days. Ask the police department to bring back experience, or to reconvene the working group that has met so many times at some point in the future. Otherwise, you've got a moving target that's constantly, there's another point that's going to be debated. Just from a procedural standpoint.
And we put this one item in it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. That'd be good.
We're not looking to implement this till around October, November, because we still need to train everybody, get them up to speed on how to upload the leads online, and plus, get the applications in, and get everybody approved. So, I'd say if we're going to go back and review it again, we probably want to do that, maybe the six-month time period, to give us some time to get some of that work done.
Okay. Okay, Ray? And Bill?
The comment that Dave made about having, getting a list from the PD?
Yes, and one of the things that did come up in the working group is that we would attempt to get out of our record system, weekly, a list of property that's been stolen. So what we could give them is an incident number, a brand, and a serial number, and maybe a model number. We'll see how we can get that information out.
We started that this week, so we've already sent them one list already.
We got the first email.
What's that?
Yeah, we got the first email from you guys.
Well, respectfully, that would not be something you'd want to put in an ordinance. An ordinance is a constraint on the citizens, not a constraint on what the government's supposed to be doing. That's handled by the city manager, giving orders.
Is that it, Ray? Okay.
Mine was taken here.
Okay, all right, Bill.
So, a question for Jim, back to page eight of the ordinance, page 10 of the packet, on 7.90.090 subsection C. Does that wording need to change, based on the proposed change on page two?
Well, well, I mean, you're, you're not holding, if the compens... Yes, it would.
The however, pardon, the however, the whole period of 14 days still applies.
I think you'd simply take off the whole sentence, Chief. You still then are reporting it. And what it would mean is that it could be, an item could be brought in for consignment, it could be sold the next day, but the payment couldn't be made for at least 14 days. So, I think Council Coburn is correct. Thank you, Bill. That sentence should be stricken, then. So if there is an amendment, I'm happy, if I have stated it properly, I'm happy to state the amendment that would embrace both sections.
Okay, all right. Would you like to do the first reading with Adam?
Well, could we consider, let's consider, I'd like a motion from the council, let me state what I think it would be. The motion would be that the draft, which is under consideration, be modified in two particulars. The first would be, in the definition section, 7.90.020, per N2, to create a new subsection C, which would say, acquisition of property for consignment sale, wherein payment is not made to the owner within 14 days of consignment. And the second change in the draft would be to delete the second sentence of 7.90.090, sub-1C, which is on page eight of the ordinance, page 10 of the packet.
So moved.
Any discussion?
I don't think we should ask Mary to read it back.
This is just modifying, modifying the ordinance. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay.
So, the ordinance I'm reading is the one that has been modified. This is an ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code Title VII by amending chapter 7.90, previously entitled Buying and Selling Used Jewelry, Gemstones, and Silverware, and re-titling it to Secondhand Dealers and Tranchet Merchants, and Declaring an Emergency.
Move for second reading, entitled only?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, second reading.
An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code Title VII by amending chapter 7.90, previously entitled Buying and Selling Used Jewelry, Gemstones, and Silverware, and re-titling it to Secondhand Dealers and Tranchet Merchants, and Declaring an Emergency. Tranchet, I struggled with that one.
Adoption of the ordinance, second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carried. All right, thank you so much, Sergeant Dorn. I know you've had a lot of work that you've done on this ordinance, so...
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Good, I just would like to commend both Albany Police Department, Sergeant Dorn, Chief Latanzio, and all the folks in the community, in the business community, that took their time to try and craft something that everybody could live with. It's really, I think, a great model of how this should work, where people who are affected have a big say in what actually comes out. And I would also emphasize with a point that I think Jim made, that, you know, this isn't fixed in stone. It's not, you know, not one of the Ten Commandments. It's an ordinance that can be changed if there are problems in its administration as we go along.
Great, really great, great job, so, thank you. Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for your input, too, so it's very, very helpful. Okay, council, next is the adoption of the consent calendar. If there is any items that you'd like to have pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for adoption of consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carried. And next is on page 36, and this is reappointing Rosemary Bennett to the library board. And if you remember, our library board does, they're kind of, they run on a fiscal year for their appointments to that board.
I would move for the reappointment of Rosemary Bennett to the library board.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carried. Okay, next is a report, this one's on page 40, and this is Chief Latanzio again. And Captain Hyrich.
Good evening, Mayor, and seat of council. What I prepared before you is a memo trying to give you an update on where we're at with trying to decide what property the new police facility should be, where it should be located at. When we met with the Public Safety Facilities Committee, and we were talking about different properties, they had asked us, where would, all things being equal, where would the police department like to be located? And we said we would like to be located where we're currently at. They had never really been explored, as far as costs, and, you know, what that picture would look like. So they asked us to move forward with that, and that's kind of what we did. And then, everything kind of being equal, and then looking at, you know, approximately how much it would cost to stay there, how much benefit do we have keeping the same building versus moving to a new location? We kind of tried to come up with some scenarios of what that would look like. And then after we met with the, with you on the executive committee, for the executive session, we went back to try to do some more work on it, and then we received an email from one of the property owners, and he increased his price about a quarter of a million dollars from what we had anticipated. So, once we started looking at that, and the amount of cost that it was going to be to stay there, we, that's why I drafted this memo recommending that we vacate staying there, and then move into a specific site. So, currently, if you try to stay there to buy both properties in both option one and option two, it was about $2.1 million with that increase. And then also, that doesn't allow us to go to option three. One of the property owners in option three is asking about 40% more than the assessed value for the property. And then two of the other owners currently do not want to sell. So that's kind of the situation that we are currently in. So, I drafted this memo to try to get some feedback, and, you know, kind of, where would you like us to move forward with? Because we just completed the RFQ. We've told three of the companies that we've selected, they've been selected, they have till next Monday for protest. Then once that's done, we'd like to be able to go back to them and tell them what site to design the new facility at. So that's kind of the situation we're currently in.
Great decision there, so, yeah, good call. Any comments, so?
No, good, good call, Chief, I agree.
Yeah.
I would just comment that, and I went back and looked at the minutes of our discussion with Senator Morris and Sheriff Burright. And the question we asked him is, so, when would, all else being equal, now be equal? And they didn't have a specific number, they said they would leave that call to the council. The chiefs now provided us with information that if we stayed at the original site, we'd be for disparcel two, which is inclusive of one and two, we would almost be at the price of what three was originally estimated at. And we wouldn't have any security for beyond 20 years. And we wouldn't have any financing to buy property beyond that. And what I like about this proposal is, you know, we did our due diligence. The chief and Jeff went out, did their homework, tried to get those properties. But we have certainty at the Highway 99 site. We know what the acreage is. We know the projections there will last us beyond 20 years. We can build to 20 and still have future capacity. We're not getting ourselves into the same box that we got into 22 years ago. So, I certainly agree with the conclusion the chief has reached, and I will support that. By making this choice, does that necessitate changing the RFPs? Because it would only be on one site, rather than trying to work with the existing?
No, we built into the RFQ, let them know that by the time we went to the RFP, we would let them know what site we were going to.
Okay, yeah, great, okay. Yeah, Rich?
When the email came from the individual who wanted a quarter of a million more, it was kind of final, right? That's it, no possibilities. Or was it just, did they say it, or did you get the impression that under no circumstances were they going to change?
We didn't, we, basically, we went off of the email. We didn't go back to them and try to negotiate, because we weren't given that authority to be able to do that yet. But it sounds like from him, that it's an investment property for him. If he was going to go somewhere else, he would like to be able to buy something else. He can't find anything else to invest that into, he was worried about some of the tax implications. So we had originally, with our initial proposal, figuring some of those tap implications into it, to where we had adjusted the price up that much above what we thought the property was worth. And that was based on an appraisal that was done by a realtor. But then he went even above and beyond that, looking at, well, if I can't reinvest, then I'm going to have all this money loss over the next X amount of years, so I want this amount of money.
Okay. I would, I would leave open the opportunity to go back to that person one more time, and say, if, if in fact, this body says, let's go to, let's go to Pacific, one time, go back and say, we're going to go to Pacific unless you go back here? Give him the opportunity, if he doesn't want to, that's fine, we're in Pacific. So, there's no possibility left that, that there is, well, gee, he's just trying to get more money. It's, you know, there are people who do that, I don't know the gentleman, or the lady, or whoever it is.
If, to confirm, Jeff, that this is the gentleman that I'm thinking if it is. In his earliest correspondence with us, he expressed a strong reservation about engaging in negotiations, this not different person. Never mind.
He did say, and this person, I think, did say in his, in his email message, if I recall correctly, that he, he wasn't really all that interested in selling.
That's correct.
Is a kind of an indication, now, granted...
Which is also a kind of an indication, when you're bluffing, that you might be bluffing.
Could be, yeah, no, I think, I don't, I don't have any reservation about, you know, at least contacting him, again, letting him know what we're doing, but, but again, I, you know...
Leaving, yeah, well, if, if we're of one mind that says, without that, we're going to Pacific, give him an opportunity. It doesn't cost anything but a phone call.
I heard from others that really did not want to sell, and there sounds like there's some sort of family inheritance or something with the property. But the one thing, this reminds me of, when a person has a rental income property, they make a certain amount of rent, you know, income off of it monthly. And a lot of times, they factor that, that property is worth, you know, pretty much, within a year of income, they want to continue that. The same thing was with Woodland Square, why it was so hard to be able to acquire that property, because he was profiting off of it, you know, $90,000 a year. It was 90 to 100,000. So he wanted to have 900,000 for that property, because that was, you know, he wanted to have, it's like a 10-year investment. They want to get their investment back out of it. And that's how a lot of that, you know, the financing over that investment world works. And odds are, that could be in this case. He's looking at the certain income, and that's why it's more inflated than what the actual value is of that property, because it's a rental income, so... But, but yeah, I've heard some things that wasn't really wanting to sell. So, yeah. Okay, second?
One of the concerns I have, and tell me if I'm wrong, Chief, but if you're supposed to make a decision with the proposers, when is it that that decision needs to be made?
We can, we can let them know next week, after it's done, that we're not going to be able to tell them a specific site, and give them a certain time period, and just have to extend the time on when they're supposed to reply back to us. So we can make that adjustment if we need to.
I'm not talking about a long, drawn-out anything. I'm saying if we say, let's go to Pacific, with the one codicil that says, give the guy one last chance if he wants, and if he says no, great, fine, we're at Pacific.
Well, if I may suggest then, because I think there ought to be some council action, not just the chief action to make a decision on the site, might you consider a motion directing the staff to abandon efforts to acquire property adjacent to the existing police station, and to designate our Pacific site, unless, within seven days, the chief has received confirmation that the property owner in question is willing to sell for the original estimated sum. And that way, you would have a council decision, subject however to, as you mentioned, that codicil.
Works for me.
Would that, Chief, give you any greater direction, then?
Yes.
It still doesn't solve the issue, though, on the option three, though, for that long term.
Well, it would mean it would simply come back to the council for further consideration. But this way, unless the chief gets confirmation that that property owner has reversed themselves, you would have made a decision, this issue would be closed, and you wouldn't have to be having your proposers divide their efforts between designing a facility for two different spaces. Now, I just kind of think that you'd get better work if they were focusing on one site. site.
I agree.
But it's council choice.
What would the council like to do? What direction would you like to give the chief?
In my opinion, I think that the sellers of the property had their chance to, to sell and even though it would, it would have been really nice to stay there, close to the jail and whatever, you know, some things just aren't, I think it's going to be too confined and don't have the chance to buy the rest. And so, I'm for just going ahead and making it a clean break and going to Pacific so that we can actually focus on that. I mean, this has been a lot of time, it's been, it was a great idea, but a lot of time has passed. And so I think we need to just go to Pacific and do the best we can.
I could make that in a motion, or what would you, counsel?
Sure, I would make that in a motion if Mary didn't. I, I move that we direct staff to plan on the police station being on Pacific Boulevard.
Second.
Okay, all right, any discussion? Okay, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Okay, is that enough direction?
Yes, thank you, Mary.
Okay, thank you, Chief. All right, thank you, Captain. Good job. You guys have spent, had to spend a lot of time on this, so thank you so much. Okay. Next is the November and December meeting dates. And, thank you, Marilyn, you got all of it worked out quite well. So is there any questions to Marilyn on the dates that are brought forward to you?
To be adjusted if we need, I couldn't find my planner before I left. I think they're okay.
Okay. This gives it, we always adjust this annually and this gives us the holiday week of Thanksgiving off, so we can adjust our meeting schedules around that and to also sort of get about a two-week break around December to around the holidays in December. So if council doesn't have any, you don't need this in a motion, do you, Marilyn, or do you?
Odds are fine.
Okay.
You should, respectfully, you should have a motion. You have an ordinance that generally directs, I believe, that the meetings are going to be on the-
Second and fourth Wednesdays.
Since you're departing from that, I think you ought to have at least a motion to adopt this schedule.
Or it says two meetings a month, doesn't it?
Well, you're still having two meetings a month under both of these scenarios since work sessions are meetings.
I think that's all the ordinance says, is two meetings a month.
Our charter just says-
Oh, I beg your pardon, well then, then I stand corrected and never mind.
Yeah, I think it's two. Did you clarify before, a work session can be the same as our council?
Two meetings.
Okay, so, well, it's, it's up to the council if you'd like to have it in a motion or just not.
It needs to be on our website, you post it.
I'm checking.
All right, got it. Thank you so much, Marilyn, for putting it all together.
Okay, let's talk.
Okay, and next is business from the council. And, Rich, anything this evening? Oops.
Nope.
Okay, Ray?
Yes, I learned something new. Tuesday morning, I was working down at the employment department, I was up at the front counter for my two-hour stint and I looked outside and I see fire hydrant right outside the building. And on top of the fire hydrant is a bright orange traffic cone. And I said, oh, somebody's having fun, you know, stealing a traffic cone and bailing out of it and dropping it on top of the, of the fire hydrant. I said, that seems kind of strange. So I fired off an email to Mark and said, are we missing a traffic cone? And right after I had sent that off, all of a sudden, I see a city truck come up, yeah, with, and two guys get out and they grab the fire, the cone. And so I, I go outside and introduce myself to them and said, what's happening? And they said that they are going through some preventative maintenance with this particular brand of fire hydrant called a claw, I'd never heard of. And they had taken off the top and they were re-oiling it, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, I said, great, thank you very much, appreciate that. I said, how many of them do you have to do? And he said, we have about two-hundred-and-fifty of them to do. Okay, so I guess they have a crew that goes down first and puts a cone on the ones that they're going to do. And then they, the easiest way they can spot them is I see this bright orange cone on top of a fire hydrant. But they did the whole thing within ten minutes, they had it done and their traffic cone was gone, the fire hydrant was fixed, and I learned something new, that's all good.
One of the biggest frustrations to the fire department is to pull up to a hydrant and not have it work.
Yeah, boy, and they sure needed it this morning, that's very, very tragic, so.
That's it.
Okay, that's it, all right. Hey Floyd?
No.
Okay, Bessie?
Well, just a couple of simple things that I noticed in the last couple of weeks, we lost another business in town, Western Tool Supply, had closed, and really sad to hear that. And then also, I was switching over to channel twenty-eight, not to see our pretty faces or anything, but just to check what was on, and the sound is off again. So, I just want to have someone check it out and see what we can do.
Did you crank it all the way up?
Yes, I did, all the way up and, and there was nothing there. But it wasn't, it wasn't a council meeting and I don't believe it was Mark's presentation. You are a star, Mark, let me tell you. I've seen that so many times. Oh, Mike's yelling at me.
Were you saying something, Michael?
(inaudible).
Oh, it's out on the tone.
We have sound now. We have audio on channel twenty-eight.
Actually, I, because I, I was going through channels and I saw Mark's presentation on there, so there was sound, but I think I did come across that on one that we do that video feed on, or one of the other ones wasn't working.
Yeah, and it wasn't.
So it might have just been that program, maybe.
That's what I was wondering too, because, yeah, no, Mark's presentation, I've seen parts of that many times. You did a good job, every time.
And you fall asleep partway through every time.
I didn't say that, but that's all, thanks.
I'd like to pick up on that because in Benton County, we have it on channel twenty-three. And I've talked to Marilyn about this before, but there are also times when there is no audio. Council meetings come through with audio, Mark's presentation comes through because it was part of the council meeting, but there are times when we're doing public service announcement, I turn everything up to full bore.
Yep.
No sound.
Some of them don't have sound.
The other thing that drives me crazy, if you're looking for a council meeting, unless you happen to turn it on, just at the moment it starts, there's, there's no little index or schedule of when council meetings are coming.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Or when the other things are coming. So it's kind of a hit and miss, turn it on and see what you get.
That's the fun part.
As far as I'm concerned, we have a conversation with Comcast, it's got to be fixable. There's technology out there that makes things work.
Like a little ticker on the bottom.
And if it doesn't work, then why are we doing it?
Well, I think though, we, we would have to have somehow staff timers or allocate funds towards upgrading the system.
And I think if we're going to, like Floyd said, I think if we are going to do this, we need to do it well and not willy-nilly.
My recommendation would be if you're, if people are just, you know, generally dissatisfied with the television experiment, that we not do it. Because we don't have additional resources right now to put into it. And, you know, we're not, we're not hearing a lot of interest or complaint. And the other, the reason I say that, as somebody who has been an advocate for a long time for, you know, broadcasting our, our council meetings, is that we are currently, the most reliable way to see them right now is online. You can see them live and you know when they're going to be, because our council meetings are well-advertised, and you can watch them at your convenience, online. The, the, in my opinion, the television part of it was always sort of a secondary way of allowing people to look at it. And we know some people do, but if there isn't a belief that we need to upgrade and be more professional, I really don't think we have the resources right now to put into it. I mean, I, I just don't think, spending more money for the very few number of people who see the, the television part of it makes a lot of sense.
Well, the other thing is, is I never thought there was much that sought on TV, but I have been hearing more the last year, that say, they're seeing it on TV.
Yes, me too.
And it's more seniors, I think, that don't have the internet.
They were not the people who responded to the community survey.
Yeah. They were or weren't? Did you-
They were not, apparently, because the, the numbers on the community survey of who, who's watching council meetings were like zero to two.
Yeah.
It was very, very low.
That was done through email too, so I think it's more seniors I'm hearing from.
I, I would agree with Wes, if we knew what the order of magnitude was we're talking about. I think we first have to have a conversation with Comcast, find out what, if anything, could be done to fix it, what it would cost. That comes back to us. If it's an exorbitant number, we don't do it. If it's a reasonable number, we do do it.
I agree.
Okay. Is that it, Bessie?
That's it.
Bill?
Rich, did you have a comment?
Comment about Western Tool. They started here in the nineteen seventies, seventies or early eighties. They grew to have, I don't know, twenty-some stores all over the nation.
Yes, sir.
And it is ironic that this one is the one that went away, because it's just where they started was where, I don't know, the music store is, across from Napa.
Right.
It is, it's my understanding that a piece of them moved out on Ferry Street someplace. Whether it was the same people or somebody bought a piece of it, I don't know. I haven't gone down there looking yet.
I'll check that out, thanks.
Yeah. That original store built was for fabric land, so, fabric store was there originally.
Well, fabric, fabric is not nearly as important as tools are. Oh, it's the guy, too.
But I shopped there when it was-
No, you're right, I buy very little fabric.
I haven't bought fabric in a long time.
We actually have, what, three now, now? Yeah, so, okay, Bill, did you have any-
So, a question for Mark. I got an email, maybe others did, about a citizen that moved to Albany recently and the sewer bill seemed high compared to the water usage. Are you aware of that one?
I am. Mark Yager had a long conversation with the citizen, not sure the citizen is, trying to explain the issue of someone with, with no history, starts out with eight units of sewer charge until they establish a history. So we did explain the billing methodology to them. And that billing methodology is still where we're at today.
So how long does it take to establish a history?
I, you've got to get through a winter, so it's November, yeah, November, December, January, February.
So, because I guess I didn't think his request was that unusual to match his sewer with the water during the timeframe until a history can be established?
We, we can look at, I, I don't know all the algorithms and things that need to happen in our programming, we can look into doing that. If that's something council would like us to do, we would need to bring something back to you probably regarding our, our rate resolution to clarify how to do that. But that would take a little more investigation on how we would do that.
I guess what I'm thinking in my mind is, on one hand, being on council, understanding the system, how the rates work, I'm sorry, that's just the way it is, versus, you know, you put on your citizen hat and it's like, wow, isn't there any way to, to, to challenge this or make an exception or something's reasonable, I'm using three units of water and paying for eight of sewer. It's just, you know, you can't fight City Hall kind of thing. So that's where I'm torn, I guess.
Right, and, and there is, you know, council granted some authority for the public works director to deal with people who are sewer-only customers as far as long-term, also gave them an option to meter their well. Addressing these customers who don't yet have an established sewer and water consumption history, we could look at, at trying to find some flexibility there, yeah.
Okay.
So I can bring something back to the council if that's what you think?
I don't know how often it comes up, and of course, I can appreciate when Wes says we don't have time really to, to look at somebody programming TV programs on channel twenty-eight, which is, you know, kind of what we're talking about. I can appreciate we don't have staff time to deal with every single individual water and sewer user. On the other hand, you kind of like to think that maybe that's what we're supposed to do. So I understand, and there's got to be a balance there. So, if there's something we can do for the gentleman, that's-
I'll have some further discussions with our utility billing department and see what, what can be done, if there's something that can be done. What you may want to try to avoid is accommodating just those who complain. You want to treat everyone equitably. And so, if we develop a system where you have someone who is a new customer and we want to come up with a new way, you know, the default is eight units unless the water usage is under that, we would probably want to offer that to every customer, not just those who, who complain. So, let me do some more research and I'll bring something back to you.
Okay, all right, Floyd, you're okay? Okay, is that it, Bill? All right, Dick?
Yeah, I had the same experience, Ray, that here comes a city truck and they start taking apart the fire hydrant. So I go over and talk to them. And it's interesting that the fire hydrant is empty because the valve is down in the ground. Fire hydrant's empty until they turn the water on. And so they took the valve out and they started leaving and I said, well, what happens if there's a fire? Well, they said, we don't think there'd be a fire.
We don't need fire hydrants.
I expected they'd be back the next day, probably. But hey, they were back in about half an hour and forty-five minutes, put it all back together and tried it out, worked great, so. Yeah, I was pleased with the cheerfulness of our city staff and how efficient they were in taking stuff apart and putting it back together.
Good response, yeah.
You know, having been involved with that, Dick, one of the things that's most frustrating for city staff is all the people come up and talk to them, take time, wait and do the job.
That's true.
Especially if, if it's a counselor saying, hi, I'm, I'm a counselor and I need this, so they want to spend extra time.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, Dick? Okay, so I'm just going to boring back up to you from our wonderful city attorney who knows our charter more than any one of us. So, our regular, the regular meeting of the council shall be held on the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month, commencing at the hour of seven fifteen PM. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the council may, by motion or resolution, set such different or additional meeting dates and times as it may be deemed appropriate. So council, we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, we change that ordinance.
You can't, it's in the charter.
Check it out!
I make a motion that we reduce Jim's retention.
Yeah.
So it was, so the charter actually states two meetings a month, wasn't it? And this, so this is just in our code, okay?
So I'll make a motion, we adopt staff's recommendation on meetings for November and December.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carried.
Question?
If you don't want me to look, don't give me books.
But then it was, it was not the charter, yes. All right. Okay, so I didn't have anything this evening and Wes, I think you had an eye.
Rich, I think you had an eye.
Oh, Rich, yeah.
So why is it seven fifteen for this meeting, four o'clock for a work session, five fifteen for a CARA meeting, eleven-four for wherever else? Is there a way we can make these closer together so, hey, the city is meeting, it's at time?
You know, it's funny, because we brought up many times over the years about the seven fifteen, why do we have it seven fifteen?
Yeah.
And we've thought about seven, we've discussed like six-thirty, and it always goes back to seven fifteen. It's been that way that, you know, for twenty-seven years.
But that's fine, I just, why have them all different? I mean, if, if you're, if you're someone who wants to go to a, a meeting, if you know you show up at seven or seven fifteen or whatever it is, you know you can attend that meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, do you eat before the meeting, do you eat after the meeting, that, you know? Why a difference is all I'm saying.
It, it was just kind of that when they were establishing with the work sessions, it was always established at four, as CARA when that was formed, that was established at five fifteen, so yeah.
Well, and I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Floyd will probably remember, but I think that the work sessions were established at this time so that you minimize the amount of time staff had to-
Exactly.
-be working overtime and the amount of then comp time that you would be providing. So it was, that's why that decision.
In conflict with Monday Night Football. It starts at six.
There you go. It's true.
I knew that was a good reason.
And CARA was, CARA was set because of the combination of the advisory board and ERA, trying to just get it after work to get it started, rather than having meetings that go from 7 till 11 or 7:30.
So Rich, I'd appreciate if you don't bring it up again, okay? It's done, it's sealed, in stone.
In stone, can't be changed, no matter what.
Just many times, yes. Okay, I think Wes has something, and then Mark?
Maybe.
We have one issue that had come up in our joint meeting with the school district. As you recall, they, you heard a presentation there on the new field that's being installed at South Albany, and they had requested that, if it would be possible, that they would be very grateful if we would be able to waive or forgive the permitting fees associated with that project. Mark has the discretion to waive the erosion and sediment control permit, which was about $1,000, and he has indicated that he will, I don't know whether he have done it or will do it, but.
They actually paid the fee.
So we'll refund that to them. The other issue is, is about, I believe it's about $4,600 in plumbing permit fees, that we have no discretion, we as staff have no discretion, and really, the council, my advice to the council would be not to waive it, because we have to pay a good percentage of those fees to the state, and we would have to, you can't really, because of the state law on how you dispose of building department funds, we really can't waive that fee. So if the council is disposed to honor the request, we would need to pay for that permit from, you know, economic development funds or some other.
Your salary.
And.
Pardon? Your salary.
My salary, you know.
Jim's.
Jim's salary, yeah, well, somebody's, but it's, it's a council call, I mean, yes.
I was saying, Wes, what are you looking at? I mean, we have forgiven some fees before, but I just wondered, how much are we looking at for, to pay the state?
Well, again, I don't, the payment to the state is sort of a secondary issue. One of the issues that you run into with building department funds, there is state law that requires building department permit fees to be, can only be used for the building department, so you really don't have the discretion to waive them. At least, that would be my judgment. And so my recommendation would be that if you're gonna do something with those fees, that we look for some, where you have discretionary resources, that you could pay for them.
And we have, we've had requests many times over the years for waiving fees and like SDCs, so we've always had in the policy not to waive them, and, and which was a lot of nonprofit organizations, when they have built, you know, like a construction project, we've been asked for, to waive those fees, and we haven't. The only thing, we have done some on, with CARA, because then we've, you know, the contribution through CARA kinda goes through the SDCs, we might give them the contribution of that amount, but then that's transferring from one fund to the other.
We actually pay the SDCs, which is exactly what we're discussing.
So Public Works still receives those SDCs, but maybe that's, could be what you're thinking, Bessie, on waiving it, it's been, it's been an inter-fund transfer is what has taken place.
Yeah, Ray?
So, now, a couple of quick questions. I guess they're requesting this because they're just, it's critical to the, being able to fund that project for them, or are they just asking because they would like partnership from the city to help make that happen?
I would guess both, that, you know, they got a $25,000, they were quick to point out that they got a $25,000 contribution from Millersburg for the new field, and I guess they're looking at us as a funding source.
Is there any potential use of those facilities by the city and the Parks Department or anything that would justify a donation from that department?
Their potential, I think, is the operative word. We don't, we'd already heard a report from Ed that he didn't see a lot of opportunity for city use, but there certainly is potential. I mean, we may have events, for example, in the wintertime that we might wanna do that, you know, we couldn't right now because we wouldn't have a suitable outdoor space.
Wasn't this all done by private funds?
Largely, no, the school district has made a big contribution to it. I think, in fact, yeah, I think.
Well, it's what their cost is, is what they, what they put up, what they have to spend for mowing and that kinda stuff. Because it's, if they can do that one time and they end up getting it back over, you know, a long time.
Yeah, I know they're getting some money, they're selling their dirt, so, you know.
And do keep in mind, what, what you would make a decision on to contribute, you're gonna have to times it by two, because you can bet both high schools will be, you know, the other high school, West Albany, will be requesting it too.
Yeah, 'cause I don't, I don't feel that as economic development as far as business and stuff, it's a government entity also. I mean, I'd love to help them, you know, because they're short, just like everybody else is, but I just don't feel it's something that we can do at this time.
I'm trying to tie it into something that actually makes some sense, and so now I'm thinking transient lodging taxing, if there was activities there that bring people in from out of town for a big weekend soccer tournament or something like that, you could kinda connect the dots and say, "Sure, here's 4,600 or whatever from transient lodge tax."
Football and track, bring in people?
No, I mean, that is one of the arguments that they made, was that this would be an attractor for tournaments and the like that we currently can't host.
Right, so we do have the CTP funds out of the TLT, the CTP program out of the TLT funds, so they could probably put in a request saying that this would be for some upcoming event, I guess, which it would be, you know, there is the funds in there.
Mayor, I think you're right, though. I think, I think you're right. Whatever it is, is gonna be times two at minimum. And we're seeing what happens with CARA, when somebody gets a refundable loan or a forgivable loan, then everybody's asking for a forgivable loan then. Same thing, I think, happens here, if it's at South, it will be at West, and maybe at Memorial, and maybe, you know.
I think the difference, Rich, is that there's a history of a partnership between the school and the district and the city with gym usage and the pool.
Community pool, yes.
I mean, the list, you know, could go on and on and on. I look at that a little bit different, as opposed to an individual project coming to CARA without a prior history of a partnership and so forth.
Well, I guess, where is it that we have, do we actually use the gyms that we have?
Oh, yeah, we have programs. In fact, we, we contributed money to, we paid for use of the, of one of the gyms, there are two gyms out of the Timber Ridge School, and we paid for a good chunk of that in order to be able to use that gym for both adult and young adult programming.
Well, and another example, prior to you being on council, we had a town hall meeting at West Albany, I doubt we paid for the use of that facility. Those of us that have been around longer, I have, can maybe cite some other examples, but my point being, there is an ongoing relationship there.
Well, do you wanna direct staff then, to see if there's any other source, there's some source of funds that we can kinda partner with, or not?
I think we direct staff to, our intent is to find a way to pay the equivalent of the plumbing fee, tell staff to take a look at some reasonable relationship between TRT and the Parks Fund and make some linkage and go ahead and do it.
Yeah, that's good.
Like that in a motion?
Sure.
Yes.
I can't make a motion, but is that the motion? Okay, all right. So there's been a motion, and that's to direct staff to be able to look at what's the equivalent to those plumbing fees and a source of funding to see about contributing, okay?
But clear, we're not waiving.
Right.
We're paying in lieu of.
Right. Okay, and there was a second, any discussion, anymore? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carried, okay? Is that it, Wes?
Yes, for me, but I believe Mark.
I had just two quick informational pieces for you. One, Council Collins had asked, I think it was at, maybe it was our last council meeting, maybe one before, regarding Portland and Western and the new switch, rail switchyard that is completed up in Millersburg, and when will they be moving to the, out of the Queen Yard? We did do a little research, and while the construction is complete, there appears to be a couple switches that ODOT still needs to buy off on, since they're the funding source, so construction's complete, full approval from ODOT is not yet complete, and we believe that's what the railroad is waiting on. So the ball is in ODOT and the Railroad's court right now to get that completed, so I just wanted to close the loop on that.
Hope it doesn't take as long as our traffic signals on Ninth and Oak and Ninth and Pacific and Oak.
Hopefully not, Ray.
Different part of ODOT.
I'm just gonna pass out here some graphs. It's somewhat ironic, on a rainy day, that I'm bringing you just some information about water production. I thought you might be interested with the recent hot and dry spell we had, just showing you how that affects our water production and what we do to meet those demands. The first graph is the seven-day average water demand, so it takes the previous seven days and averages it and charts it, so you can see that we had quite a spike or increase in water demand over that time. And then the second chart that is the bar chart, it just shows what water is coming from the Albany-Millersburg plant and which water, how much water's coming from the Vine plant. Again, it's just for your information, I thought you might be interested.
No question, we do, yes. The Vine Street Plant, is it ever on in the winter?
It is, it has been in the past occasionally, and it will be on more in the winter moving forward. That is because in order to meet some requirements from state regulators, we need to operate that plant more regularly.
My, my question comes from, because the canal is also the, gets water from Lebanon's stormwater?
Yep.
I mean, it's just, the stuff that comes off the streets, while it is a pretty small percentage, is still the stuff that comes off the street. It's not like it's, you know, melting snow.
Right, and that's, that's part of our discussions with Lebanon, is what, what can they do to either divert flow, and that flow that is not economical to divert, what can they do to help clean up that flow, similar to what we're gonna be instituting with our stormwater regulations, are there things they can do to, to help us out on our end? Yeah.
Yeah, and if this makes you feel any better, Rich, both Sweet Home and Lebanon discharge their sewage into the San Yum River, which of course is our primary drinking water source from the other plant, so.
All right.
Yeah, so, so someone in Portland draining a, what, 50 million gallon, you know, over a quart is probably not, not nearly as bad as we thought it was.
Not rational. And the other point is, is that we'll assume that both Sweet Home and Lebanon are doing a great job of cleaning that effluent by the time we get it. They are meeting a pretty strict standard, and it's, and it is a very small percentage of the total volume of water that goes down the San Yum River.
Okay, all right, is that it, Mark?
No one has a hand drawing that, going up out of their shoulder.
Okay, staff, have anything else? All right. Council have anything else?
Nope.
Okay, your next meeting, you, council, you get a break for a little bit, so, between meetings, 'cause our next work session's August 11th and our regular session is August 13th, so enjoy that little break. So with that, we are adjourned.